Thank you, Mayor, Commission, Tim Ross, Public Events Director. Airshow this last, just, gosh, it's been a couple of weeks ago, but we knew this going into this year, we've had a larger airshow the last couple of years with, you know, some of the jet teams that have been in town, and we knew this year was going to be a little bit smaller, and we're going to be able to save some funds with that, and yet still we had a huge impact as far as visitors go and folks down along the riverfront, folks out at the airport, and it was a great weekend, and we had a lot more exposure from it than I anticipated, being a year that we didn't have one of the jet teams. So we still had over forty thousand folks out there over the three days between activities, and we had media coverage, you know, the military teams obviously draw your visit, the majority of your visitors, and the teams that we had were great on their Facebook pages, all the social media between the Air Force groups and the Navy groups, as well as the Army guys, you know, you've got, you're reaching out to, just on their Facebook pages, to fifty, seventy thousand folks at a time as they post video after video and comment after comment about, hey, heading looking forward to Owensboro in a few days, and videos that they create while they're here, and so we had great coverage of Bowling Green and Louisville, Lexington. The web data is always interesting to me to go back and look at. Most people throughout the community probably don't realize that on social media and on web searches, tablet searches, whatever your device might be, both Visit Owensboro.com, our airshow, and even our city website, Atlanta, Georgia is a huge source for folks looking for things to do in Owensboro. We don't know why that is, but it's always been, since we've been doing it, it's number two on our list. You know, Evansville's typically the number five or six, but Atlanta is big. We had almost ten thousand web searches for our airshow from the Atlanta zip codes, which is amazing. So we had folks looking at the airshow from those cities listed, Indianapolis, Memphis, Chicago, and it's not, you know, five or six. If you had those up, we had upwards of twenty thousand web searches on our website from those, you know, big cities that are outside of this market. So we know that, obviously, airshow is kind of a niche thing that some people really follow, and we would anticipate that being larger, you know, when we bring the jet teams back like we've got committed for next year. So it does help establish the brand here, and just a good opportunity also to honor our local veterans. With those military folks in town, there's some unique opportunities for them to get some exposure. There's obviously lots of news stories that happen with them. The military guys reached out to a big group from the VFW, invited them out to the airport, and to thank those veterans for their years of service, so it's a unique opportunity for those. So it, I guess, just to wrap up, it was a good weekend, and it surprised me what the numbers were and the response we had from folks and the coverage we got, knowing that it was kind of a down year. We posted right away the dates that we've got for the Blue Angels coming for next year, September fourteen to sixteen, and they've got a winter visit that's coming up that'll be on their calendars in just a few weeks, and we'll get some media exposure from that as well. So airshow was, it was a good weekend, and it did what we're trying to do with numerous events, whether it's barbecue or July Fourth or the airshow, whatever it might be, romp, that all take services and support from lots of different organizations, but helps the local folks for quality of life and brings folks in from out of town, too. So I've got Mark Colletri with the CVB is here today as well. He and I meet regularly and talk regularly about things, and so he wanted to give a few, a few words of perspective about the airshow weekend as well.
Thank you, Mark Colletri with Visit Owensboro. I just wanted to expand a little bit on what Tim was saying. We've reported that the two main hotels downtown had strong occupancy during that weekend, and the courtyard out on Highway fifty-four also had some pickup there as well. Going forward, we think that this, events like this could be a better opportunity for us and our office. We need to capitalize a little bit more, be a little bit stronger, a little bit better on helping to brand Owensboro and letting the communities throughout the state of Kentucky know, and the cities throughout the state of Kentucky know how awesome and cool Owensboro is. So that's going to be my commitment for next year, is we're going to spend more dollars and more efforts getting that word out. And just kind of a big picture of where we see things going, you saw the article in the papers, Owensboro's, you know, a top-ranked city for millennials, and cool events like the airshow and things like that, that, that's what folks are looking to do, and that stuff helps brand what we are and who we are. So we're going to continue to capitalize on that for next year. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Can we have questions from the commission about it?
Sure.
Anybody have anything? I do, if nobody else does. I don't want, I'm just curious, how did the forty thousand number come about? I know it's always a question.
Sure. Yeah, it's a combination of things. It's gate receipts, gate counts out at the airport on Friday night from those activities, and then just crowd density.
Bobby said that was very well attended.
Yeah, it was. It was, again, we were surprised with it. The weather was really good, and we know high school football, depends on, affects that attendance, you know, every fall, depending on which teams are home and which ones are away, but it was a, it was a home run out there, and it helped the airport folks. And then the rest of it for Saturday and Sunday downtown is all based on crowd density, that we meet with the OPD guys, the traffic division, and they look at just how thick the crowd is, how long it takes for that ingress and egress of parking and folks compared to other events that we do, like the July Fourth of the barbecue and things like those.
Slow down, Tim, and you're talking too fast. I can't keep up with you.
Pam and Bob just keep nodding like, okay, I'll slow down, no problem. But that's what it's based on. It's feedback from...
Crowd density and egress and ingress.
Sure.
And comparison to other festivals.
And in other previous years as well. So we talk with the fire department and police department, and we put our joint collective heads together and look at and say, hey, in comparison to previous years or other events, we're right in this range.
So that would have been double what you did last year.
Yeah, last year we had rainy, kind of gross weather Friday and Saturday, and we still ended up, I think we were around twenty-five thousand last year, and then this year with, without the jet teams. So that's, that's where we come up with that estimate.
Okay. Why is it the same show, Saturday and Sunday?
That's based on the military folks when they come in, they, when, when those teams come to town, it's different according to which team it is, which branch of service it is, and what they pay for and what they don't. But when they commit the resources of the aircraft and the personnel to come to those cities, they want as much exposure for their branch of service because it's all about recruiting as well as community involvement, all, when they do shows all over the country. And so they require, there's certainly exceptions to the rules if they do a flyover at one of the big NASCAR races or things like that, but they, they want or they weigh heavily on it being a multi-day show, so they get exposure to larger crowds. And we know from, whether it be ticket sales at the convention center or just online folks that come, they want to know if there are multiple days because of the, the ball tournaments that Johnny and Susie have got on Saturday, and they can't get there because they're traveling, you know, with, with a travel ball team, but they can get there Sunday. So, but the reason for two days is based on the military groups and wanting the exposure for a longer period since they're here.
Okay. I have to ask, costs. I know you raised a considerable amount of money from sponsors, and, and I'd like to know exactly or close to it. If you don't have those figures, you can get it to me some other time, but I'd like to know what the costs were.
Sure.
Was for the city of Orangeboro, police, fire, public safety, sanitation, all the things that went into it versus what we actually, what revenue was generated for.
Sure. Yeah, we can get those, too. We're still waiting on some invoices from some of the equipment companies and things like that, but once we get those, we'll certainly be happy to share those.
It was a very, very great weekend, for sure. And, Mark, I got a couple of questions for you, please. When you said strong occupancy, what are you comparing that to? Do you have numbers of what a normal weekend would be? Is that how you do that?
We're comparing that based on last year, year-over-year results.
Oh, last year. So the, double the crowd, double the occupancy, then, I guess.
It didn't actually, yeah, it wasn't a double the occupancy, but it was, for instance, the Hampton Inn was probably close to ninety percent, ninety-five percent, and then, then you have to compare what kind of sporting event or what the weekend was last year, but we're saying stronger over last year, it was compared to that exact same weekend last year.
So you weren't comparing it just to a normal weekend?
Right.
But it was compared to the airshow weekend last year?
Yes.
Okay. Great job. Thank you. Anybody else?
I just, I don't have, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I was at the static airshow, and I thought it was terrific. It was very well attended, and the Hueys and the Cobras being there, even though I didn't pay the money to do it, I know a lot of people did, and tying the vets in. So thank you both, particularly Tim and your staff, for a great job. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Ross, open container policy.
Sure. Open containers, I know we've had questions from commission in the past about what's even possible with open containers here in the Commonwealth. We look at it somewhat regularly. There are cities all over the country that do it differently, and some folks have got open container regulations in place, and they'll open up a Riverwalk, and they, on a local level, are able to change some ordinances to allow for a little bit more loose regulation of those. But currently here in the Commonwealth, there's only two opportunities for cities within the Commonwealth to have a looser regulation of open containers, to allow open containers...
By state regs?
By state regs, yes. Open containers on public spaces, streets, parks, sidewalks, things like that. The two there on the screen, Entertainment Destination Center is what they refer to on the state regs as EDC, not Economic Development, but Entertainment Destination Center. Exactly. It was confusing as we, as we researched that, but they refer to it as an EDC. And then the second one is a temporary license. So currently, these are the only two options that, that we have for that here in the Commonwealth.
What's the definition of a temporary license?
I will get to that.
Excuse me?
No problem. So I'm going to, I'm going to walk through...
I thought you might already said it. I'm trying to keep up with, you know, go ahead.
I'm going, I'm going to talk through both of those definitions and give you examples of both, so, so we understand that, to make sure. We're just trying to share what restrictions we've got. So the first one, Entertainment Destination Center, is referred to as a themed, complex destination. Within that is required to have a themed restaurant, doesn't define what that is, but something, you know, like a Rainforest Cafe or a Hard Rock, or, you know, a destination type of eating establishment. It contains retail or theater or a concert hall or a museum. You get the idea of what they're going for. It's, it's a complex that contains entertainment aspects. An Entertainment Destination Center also has to be located within one mile of a tourism destination, such as a convention center, performing arts, a key anchor in your community. The Entertainment Destination Center also requires a minimum of a hundred thousand square feet of entertainment complex buildings. So it cannot be just a big park space. It's got to be something that contains what we referred to in that last slide, a hundred thousand square feet at minimum of theaters, retail, restaurants, concert halls, museums, that type of thing. And it also has to have pedestrian protect, pedestrian protection. I'm fighting this cold, too, so it's kind of hard to talk. Pedestrian protection from vehicular traffic. So you have to limit vehicles. So as an example, most people, even when I moved here years ago, always referred to Fourth Street Live in Louisville. We want to be Fourth Street Live. And if you look at a map, just an overview aerial there of Fourth Street Live, it is a destination complex that contains restaurants and bars and shops. It's all contained within around a city block, per se. It kind of shares two blocks. Fourth Street, they completely blocked the vehicle traffic. So that is an EDC within the Commonwealth, and the normal open container laws of the state don't apply as long as you're within that red highlighted area. So you can purchase an alcoholic beverage from Hard Rock Cafe and walk out onto that portion of Fourth Street that is closed to vehicle traffic, and stroll up and down the sidewalk and go visit a retailer or another restaurant. That fits that definition. We here in Owensboro don't have anything like that currently. We don't have a place that's got a hundred thousand square feet that's in a defined space that contains that amount of square footage of retail, restaurant, et cetera. So the next option is going to be a temporary license, and we have several events that take place throughout the year that request a temporary license from the state and are granted that. The photo there is White on Second, that the symphony's done several times, where they close a portion of Second Street and do a fundraiser. The Barbecue Fest, and there, the Beer Garden area there at McConnell Plaza is a temporary license. So temporary license can be requested and applied for by nonprofit organizations, or if the event is defined as a civic event. So anything that benefits the community, and if the city, Steve Lynn or Ed or myself sign off on a letter that says this is a civic event for the betterment of the community, it's helping our, our community in one way or the other, we can request that temporary license. It does require boundaries to be set up to ensure that no alcohol comes in or no alcohol leaves the defined space. And then here's the kicker, is that it also requires that liquor that is purchased from one licensed establishment cannot cross into another licensed permit holder's space. So I'll define, I'll, I'll give you a few examples here to kind of help explain that, because that's where it gets to be problematic for several events. So here's an aerial view of our downtown. On the left-hand side, the big white box is the roof of the convention center, and on the far right-hand side, the smaller little white box is the River Park Center, right? So if we decided, if the commission decided, if the event decided, for instance, hypothetically, River Park talks to Friday After Five, and Friday After Five says, hey, we want to be wet-zoned, the whole space, the whole Riverwalk wants to be a wet-zone space. So River Park Center, now highlighted in yellow, already owns a liquor license, full-time. You can have drinks on their property, right? So they could fill out a temporary license request to define the rest of the Riverwalk Friday After Five space, however they wanted to define it, and request a temporary license. So if me and my significant other were down at Friday After Five, we could buy a drink from River Park and start walking down the Riverwalk with our drink in hand. However, once we got to the convention center, we would have to throw that drink out because the convention center already has a permanent liquor license. So my drink could not cross into convention center space. If I bought a drink at convention center during Friday After Five, I couldn't now walk onto the Riverwalk because River Park Center's license is who requested that temporary license. Does that make sense? Because one, you only have one, a stat, only one entity can request that temporary license. So as the growth continues along our riverfront, if Barbecue Fest, for instance, decided that they wanted to expand and allow alcohol anywhere within the defined space, and not just in McConnell Plaza, you have Lure, that's now highlighted in blue at the Hampton Inn, they've got their own separate license, VFW's got license, Bluegrass Music Museum's going to have one, the Enclave, we would assume, they haven't announced what restaurant, they haven't announced which restaurants, but you would assume maybe one of those has, is going to have a license for alcoholic beverage, and you've got FEDA, and you've got Cambrianus, and you've got all these other CYO groups that all, the new Bar Louis, that are all going to have their own licenses. So from a practical standpoint, if the mayor's down there with Barbara and they're walking through, how do you enforce where you purchased the drink and where you didn't purchase the drink? It becomes convoluted, a little bit problematic for enforcement of that license based on the current restrictions that we have from the state. So that's the challenge with the temporary license, and why it's been done currently the way it is with our different event folks. The Symphony, when they do their event, I didn't highlight it on this, but the White on Second, they have a defined space of just Second Street, from Davis to J.R. Miller. They're bordered by buildings on the north side of the street, and they're bordered by First Baptist for a portion of that south side of the street, and so they have security guards on the east and the west side, and they can ensure that no alcohol comes into their space with their tables and chairs and no alcohol leaves, and there's nobody else within that space that has a permanent liquor license. When Barbecue Fest does it at McConnell Plaza, there's nobody within that defined space when they put up their little bike rack fencing, so they can ensure that no drinks are coming or going, it's just their license that they pull. But if we expanded that, and you start to get into the other established that have them full-time, is where it becomes problematic. So that's how a temporary license could potentially work on a riverfront, but the restrictions that we've got with that, because so many other groups have got their own full-time licenses. Some of the other concerns that we would have, obviously, we'd take direction from the commission moving forward, but currently underage drinking, you know, if you went, the first example of Friday After Five, there's a tremendous number of youth, and OPD would, would talk about that, there's a tremendous number of youth through the middle of that riverfront park space, and so now trying to ensure that youth are not drinking, and who's got drinks and who doesn't, and the wristbands could be problematic. There's a playground in the middle of that space? Is that the image you want for the, the younger kids in the playground? Obviously, you'd have to set up boundaries and staff to ensure drinks aren't leaving that space, depending on how large you make this, the area, and then security and enforcement would, would be a concern. So those are the two different types of licenses currently allowed by the state, the Destination Center or the temporary license, and those are some of the kind of hypotheticals that we talked through as a staff to go, in this situation, how could it work for us here? And unfortunately, we're not allowed to do things like, the only two EDCs that we're aware of, Fourth Street Live, and then up in Newport.
Newport.
Newport on the levee's got it. But again, it's a destination that you drive up to, and it's kind of its own complex, and everything's contained within that complex. But there aren't any other cities that, that we're aware of that have that current designation because of the restrictions that are currently on it.
Could I ask city manager a question for the Home Rule folks that you've been meeting with all these years? Is that ever, is this, I'm looking legislatively or regulatorily somewhere to try and massage this rule so it, you know, could, it could fit into what we want to do. Has that ever come up in your decisions?
Never come up, Mayor, but I have a meeting in November that I'm attending, and I'll bring it up there.
I think that's our only relief, is to try and get option three.
Sure. Yeah, currently, it just, the way it's defined right now, we don't have that complex destination. We've got a tremendous riverfront that brings thousands of folks down, but I don't see it changing drastically to be able to fit the definition right now, because we're not going to build a big entertainment complex with theaters and restaurants and shops in the middle of that park. It might be adjacent to it, and some of those pieces might grow, but it's not going to be one complex. So the definitions would have to change on a state level.
Well, I'll speak to folks and see just to, you know, exactly what the interest is in Frankfurt for some of this activity. Now, I had thought maybe we would try it as a pilot study from River Park during Friday After Five, you know, just for Labor, Memorial Day, Labor Day, and see what kind of problems we went, but that shoots, this, that shoots that in the head pretty easily.
Right, and, and again, you could go back and do a temporary license for just a portion of that space, so, because we looked at this on the one Friday After Five event when Low Cash was going to be here, and they expected that larger crowd, and we talked this through ad nauseam with several different groups. But again, the way it is currently, it's not insurmountable, but if, you know, Commissioner Conder and I were down there and we had a drink at River Park Center, and you saw people walking down the Riverwalk, we would just assume, no matter what signage is up, you would just assume that I could continue walking to the stage at the convention center, because it's part of Friday After Five.
Right.
But the current law wouldn't allow us to, so we'd get down there, we'd go, what do you mean? At the dump, I just paid four dollars for a drink. You got to dump it out before you can step foot on my side. And now, as, again, the, the restaurants progress, once the enclave opens up, or once Bluegrass Museum or Lure, we couldn't step on foot onto Lure's little patio space without potentially, if ABC came back to Lure and said, hey, look at you, now we're going to cite you or fine you because you're allowing outside drink to come in, because the assumption is that I can go from one to the next because I can walk through that space. But the temporary license does not allow for that crisscross, and that's where we got stuck with.
And I think it's protection, too, you know, as much as anything else.
It is.
I would say Blake probably wouldn't want fifty people coming with a drink in their hand, all of a sudden going to the convention center, go to the bathroom, or whatever you're going to do, so...
And even from a liability standpoint.
Liability standpoint as well.
Because if they come back and they've had excessive drinking, and they run property at yours, and something happens, or if they left yours, but they were consuming a lot before they got on, so there's potential, certainly.
Okay. Any questions?
Just have one quick one. So have you calculated the law enforcement element? Would we need to have more officers? Would they have to have any special training if we were to go this route?
It'd be something that Chief Elam could talk about a little bit more exhaustively, but at the current time, whoever the temporary license holder is, is responsible for that security. So, for instance, Barbecue Festival, they hire the extra-duty folks through OPD to monitor the, the temporary license that they've got for their event. When the symphony does White on Second, they hire additional security to monitor that closure for it. So, again, depending on how the regulations went, if we, if it allowed us, the city as a whole, to wet-zone that whole space, then yes, it would become something that OPD would have to take into account from a budgetary standpoint. But on a temporary side, if Friday After Five wanted to do it, then Friday After Five would be responsible for having volunteers and/or security to monitor those entrance and exit points.
Mr. Smith, right? You had your hand up first, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you.
That's all right. No, it's no big deal. I was just, Mayor, I think that this is something that, you know, I would appreciate if you looked into, because with us getting this status of the millennials and all of that stuff, you know, it's important that we have certain things in this, in this community. And I know I've been labeled as the alcohol-pushing commissioner, and that's, you know, whatever. But the point is, whether you choose to drink or not, that's your business, but there are people who do drink, and I think that at, at, there's a point that we would be more inviting to tourism, to a lot of things, because when I've traveled to New Orleans, to Memphis, and you see these people, I know it's in an area, but they, you know, Bill Street, whatever, they, they're walking from one place to the other, and a lot of the places say, hey, you can't, if you come in with a drink, you are required to buy one drink here. I mean, you know, there's a one-drink minimum, you know, there, there are things that you do to offset some of this other stuff, but I do think it's worth looking into. Thank you.
I'll look into it, and, you know, Tennessee might have a few different regulations, you know, they're not very smart down there, so...
And I will, I will say this, just to add on to what she said, you know, you'd mentioned a pilot program earlier. Again, we take direction from the commission, but one of the cities that we've looked at has a Riverwalk that they've been developing for years, they finally got it developed, and they have open container limitations that wouldn't allow for that. They've got, I think it's about eight restaurants that are adjacent, quote-unquote, to the Riverwalk space, so they got permission to start a pilot program, like you were mentioning. And some of the enforcement of that is each of those restaurants has got certain designated cups, and again, you could get around that, but they change out every, I think it's every six months, and so if you've got a drink up and down that space, unless it's in one of those designated cups, then you can be cited or you can be asked to put it out, or, you know, whatever. So there's some limitations around that, that, you know, that you could be creative with if the state would allow us. Currently, but certainly, there, there's other references that you can get from other states if they ease those limits a little bit.
Mr. Smith, right?
And some of the other things, you know, like there, there are no, no glass containers. They're all in plastic or whatever, so that there's...
the temporary license that they've got for their event. When the Symphony does White on Second, they hire additional security to monitor that closure for it. So, again, depending on how the regulations went, if we, if it allowed us, the city as a whole, to wet zone that whole space, then yes, it would become something that OPD would have to take into account from a budgetary standpoint. But on a temporary side, if Friday After Five wanted to do it, then Friday After Five would be responsible for having volunteers and/or security to monitor those entrance and exit points.
Mr. Smith, right, you had your hand up first, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you.
That's all right, no, it's no big deal. I was just, Mayor, I think that this is something that, you know, I would appreciate if you looked into because with us getting this status of the millennials and all of that stuff, you know, it's important that we have certain things in this, in this community. And I know I've been labeled as the alcohol pushing commissioner, and that's, you know, whatever. But the point is, whether you choose to drink or not, that's your business, but there are people who do drink. And I think that there's a point that we would be more inviting to tourism, to a lot of things, because when I've traveled to New Orleans, to Memphis, and you see these people, I know it's in an area, but they, you know, Bill Street, whatever, they, they're walking from one place to the other, and a lot of the places say, hey, you can't, if you come in with a drink, you are required to buy one drink here. I mean, you know, there's a one-drink minimum, you know, there are things that you do to offset some of this other stuff, but I do think it's worth looking into. Thank you.
I'll look into it, and you know, Tennessee might have a few different regulations, you know, they're not very smart down there, so.
And I will, I will say this, just to add on to what she said, you know, you'd mentioned a pilot program earlier, again, we take direction from the commission, but one of the cities that we've looked at has a River Walk that they've been developing for years, they finally got it developed, and they have open container limitations that wouldn't allow for that. They've got, I think it's about eight restaurants that are adjacent, quote-unquote, to the River Walk space, so they got permission to start a pilot program like you were mentioning. And some of the enforcement of that is each of those restaurants has got certain designated cups, and again, you could get around that, but they change out every, I think it's every six months, and so if you've got a drink up and down that space, unless it's in one of those designated cups, then you can be cited or you can be asked to put it out or, you know, whatever. So, there's some limitations around that, you know, that you could be creative with if the state would allow us, you know, currently, but certainly there's other references that you can get from other states if they ease those limits a little bit.
Mr. Smith, right?
And some of the other things, you know, like there are no, no glass containers, they're all in plastic or whatever, so that there's, you know, less chance of somebody getting hurt with bottles and that kind of thing.
The only thing that it doesn't, it doesn't, the underage drinking is still the concern with it, that you, with the amount of youth that are in ours compared to some of those other destinations like, you know.
Yeah, but we've got, I mean, you know, you've got kids that are drinking without this even going on.
Sure.
And I mean, and you, you know, that's, that's a whole nother problem. But it's, in my view, right this minute, there's some kids somewhere that's drinking and shouldn't be, so, you know, it's.
Would it be appropriate, Art, Chief, would you like to address the public safety side of this just briefly to kind of give us, I know I've talked to several police officers and some of them say, you know, it's nice to have them all corralled in one corral, and it's, you know, rather than to see a 25-year-old guy that you think is of age and he's not and vice versa, so I would appreciate your opinion, please.
Well, I mean, the obvious concern for us would be youth. I happened to attend a youth alcohol seminar training in Boise, Idaho several years ago, and they talked about the serious problem they had with youth drinking. And they took, gave us a tour of downtown and they actually had the streets blocked off and it was just, you know, bars and people walking back and forth drinking, and I was like, well, there's your problem there, because it's tolerated and in your community, for one, you know, I'm open to anything, but the concern is this that you all have to consider, if we do this, there's no easy way to stop people from coming in to downtown. So we'd have to have officers everywhere. Our overtime budget would quadruple at a minimum if we did this all summer long like Friday After Five, going from Friday After Five, the River Park Center, all the way to the Convention Center. So that is an issue. There's also STAR training where, you know, it's that bartenders and waitresses, servers have to attend this training to, in order to serve alcohol. So, you know, with that, alcohol being brought into a situation, think about a movie theater, how many people actually pack their own snacks into a movie theater? Happens all the time. And you don't have, you know, we don't have enough officers to check everybody's, and we can't by law just go pat people down to see if they're packing in a pint of vodka or whatever. So those are the challenges that I see in terms of opening it up for everyone, just because you can put up a barricade or what have you, but that's not going to stop individuals. You get 300 or 400 people trying to come into an event, we don't have enough police officers, nor would these event people be able to staff it to where they could prevent people from packing alcohol into and out of.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, right? You'd be attending the KLC meeting tomorrow, today or something? Are you going? There are board meetings? No? Okay. I'd start with J.D. Chaney with KLC and see if this has been brought up to their people and just kind of, no reason, yes, sir?
And mind you, another issue, I mean, we've got a lot of youth downtown, so, and some of which are unruly. So you start co-mingling people packing alcohol back and forth, drinking, getting heavily, you know, under the influence, intermingling some of these youth that have no respect for law enforcement or, you know, adult authority in general, that makes our job that much more complex. So, I mean, it's a much bigger issue than just, you know, allowing people to drink in a public setting. Yes, sir?
Commissioner Conder?
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, question for you, please, sir. The temporary alcohol license itself, that's done through the ABC here in City Hall?
Correct.
Through the state. How much does that cost? What is a temporary license cost?
It's, I don't have the exact number in my head, sir. It's a couple hundred dollars. It's not horribly expensive. I think it's, it's less than 100 if I remember correctly. Steve, do you remember? I think it's less than 100 for our city version, there's two, there's requires a local one and a state one.
Right.
If I remember correctly, I think our city one's under 100 and I think the state's right around 100, but it's, I believe it's less than $200 total.
It's not very expensive, but I could get that information for you.
And in conjunction with that, I assume you'd want to have a special events permit also, right?
Correct, yeah.
If you move in that direction.
Correct. If, if they're doing that, they've already got typically a special event permit.
And a special events permit is how much?
Now, there's no cost for that, just the expenses of what required city services are required for that, whether it be trash or tables or chairs or electric and, you know, if they, if they need support from us, sometimes they come in and they're just using the space and they don't need any services from us.
So Friday After Five or any other non-for-profit civic activity, the cost that they have upfront, $200 for the license fee, if it moves forward in that direction, and then on top of that, they would be responsible for sanitation or anything else and providing their own security.
Security.
To be able to do everything that's applicable to that special event.
Correct. And insurance would be the other one, you know, if you, if they go out and get event insurance to do, if Care Net's doing their 5K walk or run, they have no liquor liability insurance required on that. But if they want to host like the Symphony, the rate's going to be different according to what underwriter that you've got, but certainly your insurance rates are going to go up noticeably if you've got that liquor liability coverage on your insurance.
And most of that is what is called like DRAM insurance that some people have to buy?
Correct.
And that's, can get very, very expensive.
Can be pricey, certainly. And again, it's different according to what the entity is, you know, it could be a few thousand dollars, it could be less than that depending on what the scope, if you're trying to cover annually or to cover it just for a particular event, so there's lots of variables there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Commissioner Glenn?
So, if the dream occurred where you go from River Park all the way down to the Convention Center, you have to shut that street off, right? There can't be any traffic. Because 4-3 is live, they don't allow traffic, I mean, I've been there.
That's correct.
Is there a cost associated with that? And if you do an EDC as opposed to a temporary license, is there, Commissioner Conder's talked about cost, is there an additional cost for infrastructure, putting up walls, rerouting your streets, anything like that, that you're aware of?
No, not that I'm aware of. The E, the way the EDC is, is you can be defined as an EDC if you meet all of these different requirements, and so one of those would be limiting vehicle traffic. It doesn't define the times that that vehicle traffic has to be limited, but currently we always allow vehicle traffic, at least on a portion of that. And certainly the more often we close that, the more often we get feedback from businesses that some are, love it and some don't like it. So that would be one thing, but currently we just don't meet that requirement to even be defined as an EDC. So that's kind of a non-starter issue, so, but costs of it, it just depends on which one you do and whether or not the event promoter is taking on those security costs and road closure costs, or if it's a city function and who assumes that, that liability.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Oh, get your water?
I got a little bit.
All right.
Thank you.
Tim Ross, food truck operation.
Food trucks, we, let me forward through the slide. Mobile food vending, we started a pilot program here in the city back in 2014, there was an ordinance amendment allowing for expanded use of mobile food vending here in the city, in our city limits. And we looked at numerous different things. Food trucks are a national trend, as it says there, that certainly add vibrancy, and the goal is to bring additional pedestrian traffic to the core, wherever those food trucks are, or keep the pedestrian traffic. It started in the much larger metropolitan areas, and rather than city workers staying inside their cubicle in their high-rise, they wanted to get them out on the city streets or, as opposed to them leaving to go run their errands, keep them downtown as much as possible. And there's certainly times when the brick-and-mortar restaurants were overloaded and people just simply don't have 20 or 25 minutes to wait to grab that sandwich, so the mobile food trucks were a quicker option. It's kind of how it started. It continues to grow, it's a $1.2 billion industry nationally. One of the things that numerous cities were concerned about initially is losing brick-and-mortar restaurants as the food truck industry continued to grow, and it's showing as a trend nationally over the last 10 years as they've looked at it, that in most metropolitan areas, the food and restaurant and catering businesses have continued to grow even as mobile food vending has continued to grow in their communities. Two examples, Austin and Seattle, thriving food truck scenes with very few limitations in those cities. Those two are some of the, the kind of, kind of guinea pig-based studies for, for food trucks, and yet their catering and restaurant businesses have grown at 16 and 18% respectively over just the last six years in spite of very few limitations for food trucks. So that's kind of goes against logic there with those cities. We've referenced numerous cities as we've looked at it back in 2012, 13, 14, when we did the amendment, we've looked at those same cities again in addition to a few extras, and some cities are very liberal and have very few limitations on them because they feel like it helps drive traffic and keep folks downtown. Other cities restrict them noticeably more, that they've got noticeable setbacks of 200 feet from any brick-and-mortar business. They've got a lot longer restrictions on hours, a lot longer restrictions, some, some cities only allow a food truck to be at one location for no more than two or three hours and with larger setbacks. So you have the whole gamut of no limitations, some cities allow them just to park on public property with no charge, no anything, and other cities drastically restrict them. So what we did in 2014, when we came in front of the commission, is we looked at our downtown core that currently didn't allow any mobile food vending on a regular basis, and we tried to come up with something in the middle, and that's what we presented the commission that they voted to start, and that's why they did the ordinance. So starting back in 2014, we do allow mobile food vending. Those four items you see there are all required, city of Owensboro business license, they've got to provide insurance, health department permit, as well as a mobile food vending permit. It's, they can get all those things here at City Hall. The costs for them, it's $250 to get a mobile food vending permit that would allow you to have your ice cream truck, your barbecue truck, your, whatever you want your truck to be, here inside city limits. If you want to vend and on a regular basis within the downtown core, it's an additional $400. So it would cost you $650 a year just for the permit for the city. The ordinance as we passed requires a drivable food truck, not a towable cart. That was something that was debated back several years ago when we did the ordinance, and the trend is towards the food trucks because it's a couple of reasons. It's a larger investment, it's not something that somebody could go buy for $5,000 or $6,000 and, and, you know, start making regular income with. And the comment was also made that we didn't want it to look like a carnival or a festival atmosphere downtown on a regular basis, so they didn't want the typical carnival-style trailers or small little hot dog carts. So the current ordinance requires that drivable food truck. There are limitations to it. One of the things, I don't remember if it's on here, but I'll say now so I don't forget, is that all of this ordinance is outside of a special event, I think I have it listed there, so I'll get to that in just a minute. But it allows parking on any streets, the times are listed there from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM daily. They can't be parked in any one space longer than five hours. They cannot park within 1,000 feet of any school unless you've got the permission of the school. There's no food vending adjacent to one of our city park spaces. Amanda in our parks department had concern that, and it was a regular battle with her, that ice cream trucks were parking, you know, at the park. A, it takes away potential revenue for the city and the concessions that we've got or the vending machines at parks, and if you take your children to the park, you don't necessarily want to have to fight and argue with them that, no, we're not buying ice cream, no, we're not getting, you know, a funnel cake, no, we're not getting nachos, we're just going to play at the park. So we don't have anything adjacent to our current park space because that is what the commission decided at the time. It also protects, like I said, our concessions and the revenues that we've got based on those. There's currently no parking within 100 feet of any business whose primary business is food and beverage, so you can't park within 100 feet of the door of the property line of Feta or any of our other restaurants. And these permits are outside of special events, so for Friday After Five, when they pull their special event permit, if you've got a trailer like several of our businesses in town do, they can participate and be a vendor at that event because there's a special event permit that's in place. We've got a map that's posted on the website that shows the limitations downtown, and vendors are permitted currently on private property. We don't regulate what happens on private property in any way. So if US Bank calls Curbside Kitchenette, which is one of the trailers in town, it looks, it's a great-looking truck, they've got great food, but it's not a drivable truck, it's a towing trailer. So if US Bank calls Curbside Kitchenette, which they do once or twice a week, then Curbside Kitchenette parks on Owensboro or US Bank property and sells to all of their employees during lunchtime. And they do that with Atmos and with.
Boardwalk.
Boardwalk, numerous ones do that. So on private property, we have no regulations at the current time. Currently, the map for downtown, here's the, the green spaces is where mobile food vendors are allowed to park and sell during that 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM timeframe. The red space is adjacent to our Smothers Park space. All the little red circles show defined restaurant locations currently. There's some that are going to be, be opening up over the next year, but limitation, limitations where you cannot sell or vend within those red spaces. Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry, we've got a question, Mayor.
Commissioner Smith, right?
Can, can you go back a few slides? Just want to see something. Back again.
You were looking for that one of the sweets, aren't you? That's what I was looking at, that truck that had all the donuts and everything in it.
No, no, no.
Oh.
Okay, okay.
There it is. Street sweets.
Oh, that one. No, I wouldn't. Okay. Now, Real Hacienda.
Yes, ma'am.
That's right there in front of the Hampton Inn.
Yes, ma'am.
And Lure has a restaurant right there.
Correct.
So was this a special permit, permit for him to do that?
Yeah, I believe that photo was during July 4th. No, no, excuse me.
It might have been the airshow.
It was doing the airshow, because July 4th, the stage was parked right there.
Because I could look down and sit right there.
Yeah, I believe that was during an airshow. So there was a special event permission issue.
But my question is, people have, our, our business owners have said to me that they resent the fact that these food trucks are parking so close to their restaurants. And, I mean, I don't know, if you have to have a, a special permit for like the airshow, then that's okay, but is that okay just like today if he wants to go down there and park?
No, ma'am, it would not be, because it would be within 100 feet. And so when we do it for the larger events, there's probably, gosh, off the top of my head, maybe five times, five days a year, that there would be a special event to that magnitude that we would have them adjacent to those, but if the other map that we've got shows, that would not be permitted because it is within 100 feet of their property line.
Thank you.
Is correct.
Commissioner Conder?
Just my quick comment, if you go back to that slide, one of the 33, I think, Tim?
So with the map?
With the map, yes.
Sure.
You know, seeing your red dots, you know, personally, the 100 feet is just, it's not enough really, in my opinion. If you're going to restrict, because you will have more that's going to be developed on veterans and the Convention Center, you know, you don't have really red dots around the Convention Center, actually. So, it, it's going to happen more and more, and I do know that one of the first questions a franchise will ask when they call to want to come into our community, though checking their box, they want to know, do you have a food truck ordinance? If you check that box, yes, they want to see it, because they view food trucks, franchises as competition, direct competition, at a much, much lower cost per square foot to build out their brick-and-mortar. And I have heard, a couple of them have called recently and have denied coming into Owensboro simply because of.
They chose, they chose not to.
They chose not to come in.
They weren't denied by us, right?
They were not denied by us, but they chose not to because of these type of limitations, especially the 100 feet, 100 feet not being long enough for, for them to sell their business. That's my, that's my only comment.
Is that universal, 100 feet, or did we just make that up?
It's not. The, one of the most restrictive cities is actually Chicago, and they've got very little food truck in their downtown core, any of their, which their downtown's massive, I understand that, but their limitation's 200 feet. And yet, if you look at Austin and Seattle that were listed on there, they don't have a limitation, that setback is, is 100 feet or less, and yet their brick-and-mortars continue to grow. It's interesting that, and I would completely understand it if I had a restaurant, I was looking at downtown, but yet we don't have any food trucks that go park downtown and vend regularly, ever.
How many do we have?
It's interesting that, and I would completely understand it if I had a restaurant and I was looking at downtown, but yet, we don't have any food trucks that go park downtown and vend regularly, ever.
How many do we have?
Currently, there's, there's only two right now that are drivable food trucks that, that are, that currently meet the ordinance, that even could go down there. So they're regularly down, like you said, at Boardwalk, they go regularly, US Bank, they go regularly. With all the events, you know, during the season, as we call it that, between Friday after 5 and the Saturday events, they're down there regularly on the weekends, but they're not down there at lunchtime, rarely are they ever down there.
Does this pertain also to a nonprofit that want to drag a hot dog stand around, too? It's the same deal for them?
Yeah, they would be, they'd be allowed at a special event if there's a permit issued for that special event, and they are in agreement with the event organizer, but they would not be allowed down there during the normal work week.
Okay. Commissioner Velada?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
To kind of resound what Commissioner Condon talked about earlier, we're seeing a lot of these, and who enforces this? I mean, we're seeing a lot of violations, and I deal with it daily because of the type of work that I do with trying to get new restaurant franchises into our downtown corridor, and even on Highway 54 for that matter, or wherever that case may be around the city. I see a lot of trucks that are set up at local businesses right next door to restaurants, and they're not trucks, they're trailers that someone's set in their parking lot, and who, who is enforcing that? I mean, is that something that OPD has to accommodate, or how do we? I mean, I'm not going to go around and call everyone, because there's several on a daily basis around that aren't doing that, and another prong of that is, we have restaurants in other cities that have food trucks that come, and I understand it's a special event, come to Owensboro for Friday after 5 for 16 weeks out of the year, and they're up here doing well, obviously, or they wouldn't make the hour trip from Bowling Green, and they almost, it's ridiculous trying to get them to commit to a, to a lease or to build a brick and mortar somewhere, because why would they need to? They've got the food truck option. If, if it's anything otherwise where it's a little more restrictive, maybe we could capture that, that revenue and get us another restaurant here that we need downtown in this corridor.
Sure, yeah. A couple of things, currently, there is no regulation on private property, so they can set up, they could go to Meyer Meyer Law Office every day, and just if Meyer Meyer decides to sublet, sublease their parking lot and allow them to set up there, there's, there's currently no ordinance or regulation against that. Same thing, that was, not even just for food trucks, right, you know, the, the gravel property right at the corner of Allen and Veterans had a Gulfstream trailer that was like a little boutique, something, you know, for a year and a half.
Seven clothes, wasn't it?
Yeah. And so there is no regulation against what goes on that private property.
But we could fix that.
Ah.
Possibly.
Mmm.
I mean, adjust the ordinance to make it a little more restrictive for things like that, where it's not such a permanent situation. I mean...
I'd have to go back to legal to see what we can, what we, what we're allowed to do on private property or not. And certainly, go ahead, Steve.
We could certainly take a look at that and, and report back to you. I mean, I know we currently issue the business license and for these portable vehicles that, I'm sorry, you know, they are, Health Department regulates as well, but certainly look into the issue of regulating on private property. We do that for the brick and mortar restaurants.
Okay, thank you.
Just keep it, I mean, my question is, I just want to make sure that everybody's got a fair playing field here, you know.
Certainly.
We're talking about someone that's investing in your community compared to someone that comes in a few weeks out of the year, makes his money, goes away, and that restricts this guy that's put his neck on the block to make a living here as a restaurant owner.
Sure, and, and I will say on that, I know we get comments regularly, for some of the biggest events that we do, like Barbecue Fest, where they're bringing lots of different food vendors, sure, a lot of those are from out-of-town folks, and it helps that, that event. As an example, we do airshow or Friday after 5, a lot of the vendors are the same for July 4th and airshow in some of those, because, A, it looks cleaner, and the, the time for them to set up and tear down is much quicker than what we used to have, with all those tents and portable grills and stuff that are set up that are sanitary, it's a lot better in the food trucks. And so, from the airshow, for instance, of the, I think, 15 food vendors that we had, I think 10 of them are Owensboro businesses, and five of them are from adjacent markets. I know Friday after 5 is about 75% of those are local businesses within the county or the area. We, it's a separate event, so we don't manage their vendors, but I know they've got a lot of the same ones that we use for airshow on July 4th, so the majority of those are all local businesses, but yet they don't meet our current mobile food vending, because the majority of those are all trailers. So they can't set up on a regular basis, only during those special events. And Friday after 5, as you mentioned, is 16 times in a, in a year when they do that.
Commissioner Glenn?
Quick question. So what I've noticed is Gene's Health Foods has a truck, Real Hacienda has a truck. It seems to me, and I, I respect what Commissioner Velada is saying about brick and mortar, but it seems to me like most of the food trucks I see, they're already existing businesses. They, they've got their skin in the game, they're already, Real Hacienda has two locations here, you know, Fire Up the Grill does our vending out of the college, and they have a truck. So what percentage of those who have a license are existing, they have a brick and mortar operation?
Yeah, the only three that we currently have are the ones that you mentioned, that, that meet the mobile food vending. There's numerous other ones that have trailers, but Gene's, Real Hacienda, then Fire Up the Grill. And Fire Up the Grill actually doesn't meet this restriction either, because they always cook their food outside of their truck, they need additional space, so they bring out the portable grills and such. But Gene's and Real Hacienda have got food prep and cleaning and everything contained within their truck. So there's really only two that meet the current ordinance, the way it stands, that you and I could go down there for lunch tomorrow, and they might be, you know, sitting on the corner of Allen Street someplace. Other than that, besides those two, everybody else would have to be part of just a special event. So when Making Strides Breast Cancer Walk happens in a few weeks, if they wanted to reach out to one of those and said, hey, we need, you know, we want to have a, you know, a frozen lemonade thing here, because it's going to be hot that weekend.
I thought you were going to say tacos, man.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. For the, yeah, exactly. That's for the American Heart Walk. But if they wanted to do that, that would be something that they would reach out to individually and do. So, but there's only two that currently do it, and yes, both of those are, are restaurants or, you know, businesses in town.
Thanks.
You're welcome. City manager, can I just ask you, why is this on the work session? What prompted this?
It were two commissioners that asked that we bring this forward for study. Just informative, not to take any action, just to bring up today that might generate discussion amongst the commission.
Thank you. How do you control their cash intake versus a credit card? Would it be easier to manage their revenue for the city if they had to use a credit card every time?
We don't have any mechanism that I'm aware of, and I've asked finance, I don't think we can regulate how they sell their product.
I'm just curious.
That I'm aware of, and that's something that's come up with festivals or fairs or whatever it might be, you know, over the years, but I don't know if we have a way that we can regulate how they take payment.
Well, I'll ask somebody smarter than me, Danae.
Mayor and Commissioners, it, as far as regulation of how they accept payment, we, we have no control over that, and whether it be a mobile food truck or a brick and mortar building, you potentially could have those same concerns on taking cash versus using a credit card, and if sales are rung through register versus not rang through. So, you know, that is not something that would be easily regulated, nor do we have the authority to regulate.
At this time? Just curious, I mean, one for me, and one for Mama, and one for Billy, and one for Jane, and one for Uncle Sam. You know, I just kind of understand the cash flow business there. Okay, anything else for Mr. Ross? As always, excellent presentation.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate you bringing us up to speed.
He's not going to do leaf season two, I'm so disappointed.
I'm done.
Oh, he's done. My head's...
I'm doubting.
I didn't know, I didn't know you knew how to get here, I was kind of worried about it, man. It's been a while.
GPS is a wonderful thing.
It is, isn't it?
It helps us all.
You have the floor. It's all yours.
Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Downey Ward Sanitation Manager, City Bones. Leaf season time again. Rough timeline next week is your last time on your normal trash day to get your limbs, your loose limbs out for collection next week on your trash day. Please get them out. We take twigs and small stuff year-round, so if you bag it or put it in your own can, that'll be fine. So next week, 16th through the 20th, we actually start sucking leaves on the 24th. We have an orientation on the 23rd, Monday. The Tuesday on the 24th, we'll start vacuuming leaves throughout the city.
Is there a difference between sucking and vacuuming?
It's just a perspective type of thing. We, we prefer vacuuming, but sometimes the other one applies.
Sometimes you suck.
Yeah, so...
Levity, I like.
Sometimes you feel like a nut, you know, and sometimes you don't. Anyway, that, the leaf collection will go through the 15th of February, when we will return to systematic limb collection, but in that time, the two months out of the year, we do suspend loose limb collection. Rough guess as far as, you know, when the, when the first passes are in the past, you know, you see roughly about 16 days for us to get through. The tonnages vary depending on the rain, the amount of leaves, everything else like that. So it's just how the chicken bones roll out as far as estimating what kind of tonnage you're going to get from year to year. I've been doing it for 14 years, and we haven't figured out a way to predict when the leaves are going to fall.
Or the chicken bones, right?
Or the chicken bones. No offense to any chickens out there. Just rough predictions on what we usually collect, you know, in the past years, anywhere from 2 million to 4 million pounds. It, it varies. Just the last three years, it's been fairly consistent, you know, and, and not one of these leaves through the shelves into the backs of the trucks. We actually have to go along and pick them all up, so it's quite a bit when you consider the individual weight of a leaf that we get, the 2 to 4 million pounds, it's quite a lot.
Downey, where'd you get that white car behind that Volkswagen?
I'd prefer not to answer at this time, without consent.
Go ahead. Commissioner Condon, did you have something you wanted to add? Go ahead.
That cat, he's awful nice-looking right there.
Anyway, we'll start in Section 5 this year. The city is divided up into 10 individual leaf zones. We advance it one, one section every year so that nobody feels left out as far as, you know, you always start in a certain section, you always ignore us. So we advance it one year, last year was in Section 4, this year we'll be starting in Section 5. Rough estimate, don't hold me to this, but this is just kind of a rough estimate when we think we'll get done with the first, second, and third passes. You know, again, it varies by weather, equipment availability, personnel availability, a lot of factors affect the way, you know, how quickly we can go. And then a transition period, usually about January, we can start to reconfigure a couple of the trucks to back to chipper, to where we'll start hunting and pecking and trying to, to get some limb piles, you know, in that, in that transition time, before we're back to full systematic on-your-trash-day limb collection, middle of February. Collection options, the quickest way to get rid of your leaves is to bag them up and take them to the orange dumpsters that are residing at the Sports Center. Again, leaves only, no grass, no trash, but you can get rid of them, or have your leaf, or your mowing guy pick those up and, and take them down there, however you want to do that, but that's the quickest way, because you get them off your yard right away, and you take them down to those orange dumpsters at the Sports Center. The next quickest way is to bag your individual leaves. We ask that they be no more than 30 pounds apiece, because of the variation in the quality of bags that may be out there. Any more than 30 pounds, once it gets wet, turns into about 70 pounds, and we end up redecorating the lawn with your, your bags, so 30 pounds or less. Sending it out on your trash day, not to block your regular trash toders with them, but just to, to put them out there, and we'll get, get rid of those on your trash day. The slowest way, slowest way to do it for loose leaf is the individual leaf vacuum, considering that we have to go down every, you know, two sides of the street, basically, along the curb line. That is the, the cleanest way we can do it, if your leaves have cooperated and fallen when they're supposed to. But that is the slowest way to get through the collection area. Ensure quality service, again, we ask that you keep at least, the cars at least 10 feet away from your, your leaf pile, and if you, if you know we're in the area and you don't like dust on your car, please don't park on the street whenever we're in your area collecting leaves, because it's a dusty, noisy environment, we can't really control which way the wind goes. So, again, we just ask that you not park on the street, at least give us at least 10 feet of clearance whenever you do set your leaf piles out there. Don't mix brush or trash with leaves, we find all sorts of things mixed in with the leaf pile that shouldn't be there, ax heads, railroad spikes, cans, all manner of things. And the, the vacuums will dutifully, I mean, they're, the impellers are spinning at 1,400 RPM, sucking 24,000 cubic feet a minute. It will suck up whatever you put the nozzle over, so whatever's in there that shouldn't be there, it'll suck it up, but it does a little bit of damage, and it gets your attention right away. So we just ask that you not mix anything else with the leaves instead of, you know, just, just leaves out there. Don't wet them, I know that keeps them from blowing around, but it just slows our job down, because we have to kind of fluff them up to get them to, again, suck up into the, the vacuum hose. Don't cover up instructions, water meter lids, anything else that may be on the ground that we may step into or onto that you value. Rake your leaves curbside. We, we say that, I know a lot of times you'll see our guys sweep the, the leaves out into the street, makes it easier for our collection purposes. We just ask that you keep them curbside, though, or up in the lawn until that time. If we do have a rainstorm or something like that, and you've got them in the streets, it goes into the storm sewers, it blocks the drainage and everything, and that's exactly what we're not, you know, we're designed not to do. So the, the whole big aim of this whole thing is to keep the leaves out of the sewer system to improve the drainage and less flooding. So 4 million pounds of leaves in the sewer system is what we're trying to avoid. So anyway, leave them up in your yard, don't block the sidewalk if you can, but, and then again, just be ready when we come by. Watch the website, newspaper, certain radio outlets, Channel 75, keep up or call us to find out where we are. You know, about a week before we get there is a good time to rake and get that out there so that we, we can get it on the first time and get out of your way. And that's it for leaf brief 2017.
So the main reason is to keep them out of the sewer?
Yes, sir, that is the main reason. Curb appeal is a secondary effect there, but the main thing is just to keep them out of the sewer system. It's a part of the litter, litter abatement process, and it just increases the drainage.
What's the cost of your leaf pickup?
Overall cost, manpower and equipment, all of it, it's, I, I could get you a number, it's just mostly just the individual, individual, you know, paying the temporaries, because we hire 13 temporary personnel, full-time personnel, like that. I wouldn't even have a guess.
Okay, just curious, I thought maybe over the years you'd say, well, it cost us the last year, because I could see the tremendous difference in the numbers of tonnage or whatever it is, from 400 and something to, down to 117, so...
Right, and needless to say, the quicker we get it done, the, the cheaper it is, because it's, your personnel costs are some of your bigger costs. The equipment is around to, for dual purpose, you know, the, the same trucks that we use for leaf season are the regular chipper trucks, they just reconfigure slightly. So, you know, all the other equipment are used for other things, but we do plus up personnel-wise to help us with the, the manpower.
Hey, don't want to be sucked up into a chipper truck, I can tell you that. Okay, any other questions for the leaf operations? Nice to see you, sir, thanks for being here.
And not viewed.
Okay. Item number six is the city project list. Is the city manager here today?
Yes, Mayor, you have those in front of you, that report, we're prepared to brief by exception. I will note, though, that our chief operating officer, Ed Ray, is out, and our, our CFO is going to have to get back to you on some of these, we're ready to, to give it a crack.
Okay, any questions from the commission? Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Mayor. Parking garage, Mr. Parish?
Yes, sir.
States that the parking garage architect has completed drawings and bid package. When I saw the, the ad in the Messenger Inquirer this weekend for that bid package is now available. When the architect was, who is the architect for the parking garage, please? Do you know that? Do you? Go ahead, please.
Condon, it's Integrity Architecture.
And they're, do you know where they're located?
I do not know that for sure.
It's not local? Don't know that for sure?
I don't know that for sure.
And do you know if that was, that entire project was, an RFP was sent out for bids, it's come, they come back and they get to select that?
I do not know that for sure. It is considered professional services, so that is not necessarily a requirement to do that. I do know that.
Okay, and this was, I assume, chosen over a year ago, to do all this design work and everything else? I don't know when that happened. Do you know when that, that occurred? Selection of the architects and everything else?